And you're good to go.
Okay, good evening all. I would like to call this special meeting of the North Sonoma Valley Municipal Advisory Council to order. And as our first order of business, I think we will go ahead and and take and lead the group in the Pledge of Allegiance. And then we'll we'll take our roll call. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, other God. With liberty, with justice for all. I think I forgot a line. I think I
Indivisible.
Indivisible. Sorry. Obviously, I'm a little out of practice. Okay, Arthur, do you want to read the land acknowledgement and then we'll take the roll call? Thank you.
So we acknowledge that the citizens and communities served by the North Sonoma Valley Municipal Advisory Council occupy the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewok who are closely related to neighboring indigenous peoples, the Pomo, the Wapo, and others. Asking forgiveness for past transgressions they and their ancestors experienced, we humbly invite them to join us in person or in spirit as we give gratitude for their ongoing stewardship of this place since time immemorial. Recognizing how much we benefit from their continuing presence as culture keepers and teachers, we commit ourselves to building positive and lasting relationships with our local indigenous community and to honor all the diverse peoples in our region. And should I go ahead and call roll? Councilmember Oldroyd?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Dicky?
Here.
Councilmember Newhauser?
Here.
Councilmember Handren? It's like she's not here. Chair Eagles?
Here.
And Vice Chair Dawson? Here.
Great. Thank you, Arthur. Just an announcement that the Q and A and chat are turned off for this meeting. When public comment is open, please use the raised hand function on Zoom to be recognized and promoted to speak. If at any time it appears that our meeting has been hacked, we will immediately terminate the meeting and reschedule for a future date. Okay. We are now going to move into item two on our agenda, which is public comment for items not appearing on the agenda. So any public comments not appearing. I want to acknowledge that we had one public comment that was forwarded by Hannah. Thank you from Thomas L's, a public comment. Hannah, any anyone looking to make a public comment?
We have a couple of hands raised, so I'll go ahead and share the timer. All right. And first up is Josette. Josette, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, Josette Bros-Eicher, Boys' Hot Springs. Hi, I would like to let the North Valley, North Sonoma Valley MAC know and all the attendees tonight about something very important happening in the springs area of our valley. There is a proposal now to build a Springs Plaza at the corner of Boys Boulevard and the highway. This is a partnership between the property owner at the site and the county. Many of us are not in favor of the plan for many reasons. The area is way too small and not an ideal area for community gatherings, and there will be an underground parking garage created that will mostly benefit this property owner and not our community. Please go to our website, wakeupsanoma.com to find out more. There will, there is also a link to sign our change.org petition. Again, that's wakeupsanoma.com. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you for your comment, Josette.
And next up is Thomas. Thomas, you should be able to unmute.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, yes. Through the chair, I didn't know that my comments were going to be received and transmitted. And so I was hoping to possibly read that part into the record because we're asking that the county do something and asking that the the Max in Sonoma and the Citizen Advisory also include those comments, these comments. Is, I hope that's all right. Okay. Whereas the project EIR, we were asking that these comments be included in the EIR. Project EIR acknowledges historic preservation of Sonoma Development Center. Is the superior environmental alternative to the specific plans proposed project alternative? And whereas the highest and best use, the property is reuse and conversion to environmental educational and affordable housing, that there are four things that we comply with. The extent, to the extent that the State of California Department of General Services approves a historic preservation project, such project shall be deemed in conformance with the SDC EIR specific plan and general plan update, provided that the number of housing units of the total square footage of planned housing units does not exceed that of the specific plan. The educational visitors serving a workshop maker spaces are limited to the reuse of remaining existing buildings. Project conforms to state law authorizes sale of Sonoma Developmental Center. And the project conforms to fire traffic requirements and specific plan secures state water rights and reuses advanced water treatment, wastewater treatment and infiltration. And then such historic preservation projects shall be deemed in conformance with categorical categorical exemptions, the common sense, wildlife parks, historical preservation, and reuse and housing and environmental improvement to the extent that they're in compliance with the guidelines. So hopefully that is something we request that that you additionally request of Board of Supervisors.
All right, and that does conclude the time.
I apologize. I couldn't, I couldn't get my volume up. So I really, I couldn't tell more than a little bit of what Thomas was saying. I saw his email. Is he asking us to endorse something or just making a comment?
Let's, let, yeah, I I'm not clear on that either. Let's let's finish public comment and maybe we can go back to that.
I believe he said he wanted to make sure that it got into the record publicly, so he would read it.
Okay.
Right. Heard.
Yeah, that's not a problem. Yeah, it's not something we can really discuss, I think. If it's an endorsement, but um, yeah, it's just once in the record, that's fine. Yeah.
All right, and that, oops, sorry. Go ahead, Chair Eagles.
No, that that's that's fine, Hannah, as are other public comments.
And I'm seeing no further hands, so I'll go ahead and stop sharing.
Okay. Yes, I I would agree. It's a little complex for us to 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 incorporate in the letter. And we're, that's not the agenda item we're talking about. So I think it was just a request to have it in the public record for tonight. And that that's how we'll take it, I think, for now. I hope that's correct. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Thomas. Okay, so I think if that's the end of public comment, which it sounds like it is, we'll go on to our main agenda item of the night, which is to review the letter to the Board of Supervisors regarding the Sonoma Developmental Center. So this letter was was drafted by Arthur Dawson, our Vice Chair, and and me, the Chair, as a small group drafting this letter and was shared publicly, of course, and with our fellow MAC members. So what we're going to do here is we're going to review the letter. And we're going to ask for our council member comments, but not line item edits initially. We're going to ask for general comments from you, my fellow council members. Then we're going to go to public comment, and then we're going to come back to council for any specific line item edits that we would, that you all would suggest. So with that in mind, yeah, Arthur, do you want to start?
Well, I just wanted to say just the intent of this letter was not to reiterate
Thank you, yes.
We've said, we're just, it's in in many ways, it's kind of a cover letter on top of everything else. So we've we're going to submit the 23 pages of of comments we've already made with this letter. So those are, those go with it. So yeah, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here. We're just trying to say here, here it is, and here's the, the most, what we feel is most important at this point.
Yeah, very important point. Thank you, Vice Chair Dawson. Yeah, we didn't want to get all back into it again. We thought it appropriate to stick to a couple of key requests or considerations or asks, and then attach our previous three letters as as Chair, Vice Chair Dawson just mentioned. Yeah, that's important context. Thank you. Does anyone want to start with any initial comment on letter? And Hannah has the letter, which we can put up on the screen at any time when we get into specifics. If anyone wants it up now, we can do that, too. So just let us know it works.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we put it up and then we can just kind of run through it? It seems like that might be the easiest way to do it.
Sure. Yeah. Can everyone see that? Is it large enough?
Yep, great.
Everyone's very quiet.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak up. I read the letter several times. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, I read the letter several times. I feel that it's well-written. I think it covers all the bases. I I I don't think it really, I found one tiny word I would change, and that was it. I thought it was great. Well done.
Thank you, Councilmember Narda Morgan. Anyone else?
I did the same. I read it as well. I don't have any additional comments to make.
Thank you, Councilmember Dicky. And it may be that folks have a, please, Councilmember Newhauser.
Yeah, I think I also agree. The letter is well-written. I think referencing all of the previous work that was done is important. As a general rule of thumb, I like to see the intent of the letter in in the very first paragraph. You know, even in the first sentence. But not to be picky or anything, but specifically, one of the things that that I was wondering about is whether or not we should mention under the housing component in that first molded paragraph that that we're actually in favor of the a higher percentage of of affordable housing, or that that in some way communicate that. Because it's, it's one thing to say we want to scale it back, but it's and that we're all in favor of affordable units, but it should be scaled back. But I wonder if we should this in some way say that 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 the number of affordable units could be actually increased if the proportion was either all or much greater than, say, market rate.
Okay, let's hold on to that point. Anything else? Anything else?
Not at this moment.
Yeah, okay.
If you wanted to suggest some language to add to that paragraph, if that sounds good, Chair Eagles, we could, we could consider that and
Absolutely, but we were going to do that after public comment.
All right, yeah. We can take a straw boat, just so it kind of, well, I don't know. It's up to you, however you want to run it.
Let's let it, let's let it, let's let it sit, let people can think about it for a bit. You know, we can, that could be a simple change if we decide to go with it. But let's let it marinate and we'll, we'll, I've made a note. Councilmember Oldroyd?
I think I'm going to conclude that it's well-written, and I like how you get to the point and lead us through the issues and then have a proper conclusion. So, well done.
Great, thank you for those comments. Okay, so anyone else want to comment further? It sounds like Councilmember Newhauser might have some additional comments, the specifics, which Councilmember Narda Morgan had one specific to go through, but we can do that after public comment, unless anyone, any of our council members want to make additional comment before we we go there. Hearing nothing. Okay, I'm going to ask Hannah if she'll she'll open it up to public comment.
All right, and it looks like we have at least one hand. So again, I'll share our timer. And this is for David, should be able to unmute.
Hi, David Iker. First, thank you for all of your hard work on what you've done regarding the SDC. I think your letter to supervisors about SDC is spot-on. I fully support it. I think the only thing that I can add possibly would be that the Glen Ellen Historical Society's proposal to the state, one of three finalists, is in compliance with historic preservation alternative of the Pacific, specific plan. This being means that the state will indeed accept a bid with around 450 housing units, which is the number of housing units allowed in the historic preservation alternative. The polls, proposal also has 100% affordable housing, which I heard you just talk about getting that added in, and I think that would be great. And by the way, the Sonoma City Council, the Citizen Advisory Commission, as well as your vote on September 21st, calling for the historic preservation alternative were all unanimous. So I'm not sure if you want to include that or not, but I think that's kind of powerful to know that everyone is behind the historic preservation alternative. Thank you very much.
And next up is Josette. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, me again. First, I would like to thank the members of this MAC for all they have done in relation to SDC. I have read your draft letter and it is excellent. I was unable to attend the meeting last Thursday at Hannah Boy's Center, but was able to watch the YouTube video. I am sure you all know what a great proposal next 100 years is. The fact that it is one of three plans the state is considering is hopeful and positive. This plan reflects the real needs of our valley and what our community members have asked for. Perhaps if the state can see that this plan is economically viable and is seriously considering it, maybe it is time for our county to do the same. The days of planning meetings, several days of planning meetings were totally disappointing with only our our district commissioner understanding the issues and inadequacies of the county's specific plan and ER. ER, maybe you can add to your letter that if the state can get and understand that a scaled-down, environmentally solid, community-supported and serving plan is economically sound, the Board of Supervisors can get that fact, too. Thanks for listening.
And next up is Thomas, should be able to unmute. And Thomas, it looks like you've unmuted. Are you able to?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, there you are. Thank you.
Oh, wow, okay. Well, thank you. And I was hoping for endorsement of that request within their approval of the of their enacting ordinance. But when I read your letter, I find it in support of the historical preservation, and it's, we were leaving it up to the state as to how they're going to determine which proposal to accept. And hopefully that can be accepted. I did not hear in the discussion of the Planning Commission that they would accept the historical preservation of the main body of the buildings. They would only have historical preservation of the few remaining in the in the more ancient buildings. There's a huge area of the history, which is being, which is not being acknowledged. It's the eugenics period that goes from the time of Spadra's, a little bit before Spadra and the and the California Required Sterilization Act of 1907, as I understand that act was enacted, if you will. And and so from that period forward, there is no historical preservation of any of the buildings or any of the things. The the hospital, everything will be removed. So that's a huge period California history, which has a great deal of relevance to the existing current white supremacy movement and the whole thing of all of that. And and that's a tragedy. So it's not historical preservation that they are advocating in the EIR. Thank you.
And I'm seeing no further hands, Chair Eagles.
Okay, thank you, Hannah. Yeah, what, one comment just back to to Thomas, and I'll open it up, is that yeah, Thomas, for something like that, we would need to have it on our agenda to consider it more and more fully and to have it, you know, in the public view. So I'm glad to hear that you think that the letter sort of encompasses some of some of your your comments in it. We are, you know, not at liberty to further discuss that tonight. And I also have one comment, and this is for my council members as well. You know, Josette and David both mentioned the 100-year plan. But of course, the supervisors really have no sway with the state on that plan. The state, of course, has not made their decision yet. So I I don't think, my initial thought is it mention of that does not belong in in the letter. It just complicates the 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 two processes. It matters the two processes that are moving forward. I I understand there's possible connections between the two. But I think in a formal letter, the supervisors, I I do think we have to keep those processes separate. And I'll stop talking now that my fellow council members weigh in on this. But thank you, thank you all three of you for your comments. The public, that is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I muted muted too quickly. Vice Chair Dawson, please go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, so I agree with you, Chair Eagles, about, yeah, that as much as many of us support the 100-year plan, it and it goes along with the historic preservation alternative, probably doesn't belong in this in this letter. And the other thing I just wanted to say to Thomas is that I know that that, you know, people who are thinking about the museum where the SDC site are very aware of the eugenics aspects, and I I believe they're going to be covered, or the plan is to cover them in that in some way. So they will, so that history won't be lost. I don't, I don't. As I see it now, I don't know, maybe Angela could speak to that, but I think it's part of the vision.
Yeah. May I say something? Yeah, so I I agree with Arthur. The ISD, I don't think, should be part of this proposal or the letter. I do want to say that the Historical Society actually did a presentation to Susan Goran, so they, the supervisors, at least Susan knows about that proposal. And she can share that with her fellow supervisors. So they do, they are aware of it. And just, yeah, Arthur's right. There are plans to include the eugenics movement in the museum. It will not be forgotten. It certainly is, as Thomas pointed out, a part of the history, and we cannot forget that. So it, if we do ever get a museum, it will certainly be part of that.
Anyone else have have comments pertinent to the public comments, or should we, we should, we could bring up the letter again after everyone has a chance to make any comments? Councilmember Newhauser, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I I I'm torn because even though I I realize that bringing up this this current proposal may not be appropriate for this letter, I think that the context that is relevant is the fact that there are elements to that plan that show that building in such a way, or developing the property in such a way can be profitable, or at least meet the state's monetary standard that was put forth as one of the overriding objectives of for the county. And this is where they've missed the mark. And I I wonder if it if it's even worth saying that that there are models in which a scaled-down project that actually builds more, a higher percentage of affordable housing, if not all affordable housing, can meet those objectives. And the county refused to consider some of these other models, such as forming a special district. And I, I, I wonder if it's worth explaining that. But I'm not attached to that, but I do think that it would be worth putting that in that paragraph, you know, to just more clearly define what it is that we're we're saying. And I do have some other small edits.
Do do we want to take a vote on this aspect? I, because I think we probably have some strong feelings one way or the other about whether this is appropriate for this letter, and then we can get into the the edits. Is everyone okay with that approach?
Yes.
Okay. All those in in favor of putting in something pertaining to the 100-year plan and its feasibility into this letter? Can can you raise your hands?
Can I make a comment first?
Oh, please, Arthur, yeah, I mean.
I would be in favor of including something about the financial feasibility of a smaller project, but not mentioning the 100-year plan. I think
That's what I was leaning toward. Thank you, Arthur.
I I would pay devil's advocate in so much that I want that to be true, and I hope that that's being discussed you know, with the state's process. But I don't know that we have evidence for that, frankly, in this group. And I I just don't know that I would support that. That's just my feeling on this. I just don't know that we have enough evidence to to know that. And to to put that out. Remember, this letter is not meant to introduce necessarily, is meant to ask, but it's not meant to introduce new new topic matter of for which we potentially don't have a lot of of data or backup. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Kate on this. I just think we need to stick to the 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 facts here of what what the county's looking at and just keep it as clear as possible. It's my, that's just my opinion.
I would really like to hear from Councilmember Oldroyd and Dicky on this as well, as having some good planning experience here. What do you think?
Well, I'm, go ahead, go ahead, Susan.
Well, I agree with the, I voted not to include it because I like the clear division between judicial, or what do you call it, AHs, authorities having jurisdiction. So that is my reason for why I voted the way I did.
The 100-year proposal hasn't really been investigated and vetted by us, reviewed, part, we didn't participate in it. You know, there, there are a lot of questions that the group will have, that group will have to answer, that we're not in any way, shape or form prepared to answer for them. And so I think it just, I think our message needs to be simple. And adding additional information to it reduces the impact of any simple message that we're offering up to the county.
Okay.
Okay, can I mention something?
Please, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I I think the, that's wise. I do have a specific wording that could solve that, this issue. If when we get to that.
Well, shall we get to that? Shall we put it up on screen? And let's, let's start with the straightforward stuff. If there is such a thing. Councilmember Narda Morgan, I think you had a word change.
You know, it's almost, it's so it's at the very end, it's the third paragraph. It's, it's really more of a stylistic thing. And it's not really going to change a lot. So it it's the third paragraph, and it's, the public took this as promise that if we got engaged That if we got engaged, and I just, I have a little problem with the word got, I just think it's inelegant, inelegant. And I would change it to if we became. Engaged, but that's just my personal.
Any objection to that change, anybody? I, 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 I think we're good to.
No objections.
No objections, okay.
That's it.
Great, thank you. Okay, do you want to move up, back up to the, the first page? And we'll, we'll go through any, um, any specifics from, from here.
Just to interrupt for a moment, I'm in favor of being a got free zone.
Good, good, Matt. Excellent, okay. Um, any, so I don't know that we had line item comments, um, on the first paragraph. Uh, council member Newheiser, I, 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 I give, uh, Vice Chair Dawson a lot of credit for, for this letter. He was the lead drafter of, we looked a lot at when we got the ask out. Uh, and if we were getting it out soon enough, but we also wanted to provide a little background. And so that's why the ask is on the first page, but not up at, uh, very high, not in the first paragraph. I'll, I'll give you that context, but, but, but please, uh, council member Newhouse, you had a couple of, of suggestions.
Uh, no, I don't have a s- specific suggestion. It's just, um, that sometimes you lose people. If you don't state your purpose of your letter in the very first paragraph or even sooner. Um, so I, I'm not going to pick this apart. I think that you get to the point. Uh, as Councilwoman Aldroid said that you do. Conclude appropriately and it's, it's fine. I, I'm not going to pick that apart. I just, I just think is that I had to read on before, and I'm, I'm afraid you might lose people, but I, anyway. Um, and I don't have specific wording for changing anything in those first two paragraphs. But I do have something for the third paragraph, just to kind of address this issue. I mean, to me, the only thing that bothered me was it didn't really define what scaled back mean. And, and I thought that if in that, um, actually, it's the first sentence. That whereas it ends in to be significantly scaled back. It could simply say comma, without sacrificing needed affordable housing. Or something to that effect, uh, because, um. Um, I think it's important that. That we at least define what we mean by stay out scaled back.
I'm, I'm good with that language.
Um, Mark, is that, so the scaled back isn't qualified, but, but so the, 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 the change would be without significantly. Sacrificing affordable housing, that would be the change that you're suggesting?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't necessarily define what scale back means anymore than, than what's there. We just add a.
Well, we, we do, we do say the, the, the size of the overall development. I mean, we do mention that, right?
We, well, I think we talk about the historic preservation alternative, which has a specific size of development.
Yeah, I think their, their max is about four hundred and seventy units. I, I don't know. I don't think we necessarily need to mention numbers. I think, um, I mean, we could talk about it, but. I mean, how, how does this sound? I'm, I'm reading that sentence you were talking about, Mark, and said the specific plan needs to be scaled back. Without significantly, uh, decreasing the number of affordable homes, something like that.
I think that would, I like that. Yeah, that sounds good, Arthur.
Did you get that, Hannah? Should we?
Uh, so it's, sorry, I think I lost there without.
Let's leave both significantly's in for now and just see which one we're going to take out.
Okay, I thought I heard without sacrificing needed affordable.
Yeah, sacrifice is good, sure.
Okay, okay.
If other people like it, yeah.
Needed affordable, is that the language?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Units?
Or housing, was it housing or units?
Maybe housing's a little warmer, a little more of a warm and fuzzy word than a unit.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and this is reflective of, of broad community consensus, and I think that's accurate. So I, I, I know, it looks like we have a hand up. Excuse me, I should do that. Council member Oldroyd, please, go ahead.
Is that right? Um, I was thinking the subject, um, rather than having it as, um, just a repeat of the subject before. I'm wondering if you can, um, rephrase it a little bit to see, uh, additional comments. Or we're revisiting comments from before or something like that. So they know that this isn't the first time that these have been addressed, that this is in a kind of a, um, letter. That's trying to, um, get their attention, even if they didn't, um, pay attention the first time.
Is that a comment pertaining to one of the above paragraphs, or is that to this paragraph?
No, it's to the subject.
Oh, mostly.
R E colon, and you're suggesting, say, additional, just adding the word additional?
Or something, or revision, you know, revisiting or something like that. Cause this one doesn't have any impact. It's just a continuation of what I said before. It's, okay, say additional comments. That's the easiest.
Well, uh, yeah, I would.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is that critical, but let's, I like revisiting because a lot of these comments we have previously made.
I don't know. Waters it down a little bit, but that's just, yeah, could I, yeah.
What's an idea?
I, I'm good either way.
Yeah, I, I, I. I guess I don't think, I don't know that we've improved it yet, so I, I'm open to suggestions, but I don't know if we've improved it quite yet with revisiting. Cause we're sort of at, it's a new ask, but it's old comment. I don't know. I, I, I hate to overthink it, but I don't have a great solution yet.
Man, we haven't actually commented specifically on the final EIR before.
True, true. So technically, yeah. Well. Let's leave it for now unless anyone feels strongly.
I think you just leave it.
Yeah, yeah.
I vote for the, you know, less words are better, really.
Did, did, did we, uh, did we, did we finalize, uh, uh, council member Newhouse's comment below? Is everyone happy with that? Anyone have a comment on that one? Um, without, without sacrificing needed affordable housing? Everybody okay with that one, that change? Any objections? Okay.
I support that.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I support that too. So I get my, my thumbs up probably doesn't go in the public record, so. I'll say I support that, so it's in the record.
I also support that.
Great. Council member Oldroyd, did you have your hand up again, or was that from the, the before? Yeah, okay, just checking. All right, where to next?
I have one other small comment on our suggestion for the same paragraph, next sentence. Uh, to various degrees, a scaled down plan would mitigate key project impacts, and then to, colon. All of those items, traffic evacuation times, I would just add, um. Well, I don't know, maybe it's, it's getting to a finer point here, but I was just going to say fishing and wa- wildlife. And, and then water quality and quantity.
I kind of think that's understood in the word water, but.
I, I, I think leaving it simple is, um, is the best in this case.
I agree.
Yeah, a little history here. We were also trying to keep this, our ask all on the first page, so we did try to shorten that paragraph. You'll see, we, we threw in an unquantified cost to the county for that, uh, new highway road connection, for example. So I'm hoping that that point is, is made clearly enough, but I think that's a big consideration. Um, but we, we did try to consolidate this sentence to be really pithy, as an old boss of mine used to say. To be as meaty as possible and as few as words as possible. So it wasn't necessarily impacts two, it was the impacts of these things. Impacts, you know, traffic is an impact, you know, um, so yeah, uh, but two would also work in there, I think. But, um, anyway, that was a little bit of a history of that, of that sentence, in case, it brings up other thoughts for folks.
Right, and I think that's wise, because I think they have myriad, myriad, you know, many, many, many letters to read. And keeping it as simple as possible.
Yeah, we took it down to eleven point, you can see there. So like, I can't go any smaller than that.
And, and I, I hear your point about putting the asks in the very beginning, Mark, and it, and one way we, we didn't do that exactly, but we. But bolding these paragraphs, I felt like that made it stand out. So even a supervisor who's just kind of scanning the whole thing. Will hopefully at least read those bolded sentences.
Right.
Good one.
Um, yeah, so. Mark, are you okay with leaving that simple and not, I, I, we'd have, we have mentioned these things before. So we're, again, we're not necessarily trying to, 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 uh, you know, reintroduce all of these concepts. I think they're familiar with, supervisors are familiar with them, but to remind them of all the impacts that, uh, you know. Pertinent here, uh, what do you think? Should, you want to keep the two in and, and, and are you okay with leaving water as just water, or what do you think?
No, I'm, I'm not attached to anything. Um.
Okay.
I do have a, I do have a question, though, since you raised the issue of the, um, evacuation route. Maybe you could explain that, because I'm, I'm a little bit confused by, uh, what is being referenced here. Because I, I, I'll be honest, I didn't refer to page ninety seven in the FEIR. Um, but my understanding was that the evacuation route that was being proposed. Was from, uh, Arnold to Highway twelve, and that in itself was quite controversial. Um, is that the one that's being referenced?
Um, it would be the, the connector that would be, you know, from the SDC side out to Highway twelve, the connector that's not built now. And, and the understanding, my understanding is that, that the costs for that road would fall on the county. Um, um, if anyone has other information about that, you know, I don't know that I, I, I'm the expert here. But that was my understanding, uh, from talking to a few folks that that, uh, we don't know what those costs are going to be. That would fall on the county. That is something for consideration, certainly by the Board of Supervisors. Um, does that answer your question, or, or am I missing that, your?
Well, no, you, you clarified the first part, but the corollary to this question is if you're referencing this, this, um. You know, proposed evacuation, you know, alternative route. It does raise the issue of, of whether or not we're actually supportive of it. Or not. Because I, I, I thought that it, it, it was problematic and there was a lot of public comments. Opposed to installing an additional route through. What is, uh, protected open space.
There are, it's in the current plan proposal, so this is connected to scale. So if you scale this down, you wouldn't need that road potentially. And if you leave it at the current scale in the proposed specific plan, which will be voted on, you know, uh, later in the week. Um, it is included in that and would be an unquantified cost to the county. Um, Chair, Vice Chair Dawson, you had.
Yeah, that's how I read it. Maybe it's not totally clear, but the, yeah, the impact, basically impact to the finances of the county would be another way to think about it. Um, and it would mitigate those, so. You know, maybe it should be clarified. I'm not sure if it necessarily needs to be, but, um, you know, we, we could think about that.
Yeah, cause it's not clear to me whether or not we're actually, um. You know. Concerned about whether we support it or we don't, and, and that's, I, I, yeah. And, cause it says here the SDC core campus was denied. You know, don't throw the fire start at or near the, anyway, I don't know, it's a little confusing to me.
I mean, just. We could even just take out that, because we haven't mentioned that before, unquantified costs, so, uh, we could consider just taking out that, that bit. I think that was recommended to us by a community member, and it, you know, it makes sense, but it's. It is also something we've never brought up before, so it's kind of a new topic, at least as far as I can remember.
Council member Dicky, do you have a comment pertinent to this as well?
Yes, I mean, frankly, as a practical matter, Caltrans will never approve that road connection. I mean, this is, it's, you know, it's an interesting intellectual discussion, but from the standpoint of a practical document. That, you know, whether you support it or not, Caltrans will never build it. You know, they have to do their own EIR for such proposals. And, uh, there, I mean, I, I've had conversations with folks that I know who work for Caltrans. They will never build that connection.
Would that be a Caltrans road? It would be, uh, versus a, 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 the county.
Highway twelve, uh, Highway twelve is a state highway.
So if you connect.
So any connection made at Highway twelve has to follow Cal's trans standards all the way across, you know? They don't make exceptions for emergency roadways.
Oh, interesting.
May I, may I make a suggestion? Uh, just to kind of get to a, a suggested edit. If we remove this, and it's a substantial portion of this paragraph, mind you, but if you remove the likewise. The county's responses down to the sentence that starts in addition. It actually, I think it's a more powerful statement, because if you go from, based on our analysis, public input. Uh, the IR is insignificant, uh, is significantly inadequate, and it's evaluation of the impacts of large scale development.
Sorry, can you guys point out to me where we are? I'm not, I'm not.
Okay, so I'm on the very first, uh, sentence of the second paragraph.
Second.
Okay, so you, so as you read through that first sentence, it says, you know, the, you know, inadequate evaluation of impacts. Of a large scale development on a rural site. And if the next sentence reads. Um, starting at. Just leave off in addition there that, um, last, uh, second last sentence. If you say, it is well demonstrated that population density is an important determining factor for wildfire ignitions. To me, that really gets to the gist of this, because to me, the, the whole thing about this evacuation route kind of confused the issue. What we're really trying to point out here is that the scale of the development. Increases the, the impacts. Um, uh, you know, and, and that, then that gives a very salient. Example. Of wildfire ignitions, and it gets rid of that road that is, you know, that's the example that's confusing.
Council member Dicky, do you have a comment on this? And then Vice Chair Arthur, you'll be next. Joe Dawson, you'll be next.
Yeah, I was gonna just type out a comment. I traveled today and, uh, I'm in a different time zone. And I'm just facing exhaustion, to be honest. Um, I was hoping that we, you know, that everybody had had a chance to read this document prior to this. And we were not going to go through this exercise of, of editing it live. So, and I understand that it's necessary. I just can't participate because I don't have the energy for it. Um, so if we're going to continue in this direction. I'm just letting you know that I may have to opt out before I can vote.
Okay, understood. Uh, I think, I think I have a suggestion, but I'm going to let Vice Chair Dawson, uh, speak first and then we'll move on.
Um, yes, I, I would, um. I would say, um, I mean, I agree, I think, I think it's, you know, it, it is stronger without the in addition. Beginning of the sentence, so I would, I would vote to do that, and I would also agree with council member Dicky that really we, we. You know, people generally seem to agree this is a good letter, so do we really need to, how much do we need to mess around with it? I think that says what we wanted to say, and we have all the supporting, you know, previous comments with it. You know, I'm, I'm good to vote right now.
So am I.
Yeah, and the only thing I would say is the next paragraph, if we find the reference to the road confusing. We could just take that out, uh, we, and, and we would, uh, so that would be the only thing we would look at. And if it's, um, it wasn't meant to, uh, that would be the new, yeah.
So should we do a quick, a quick voice vote on the, taking out the in addition? So should we do a quick, a quick voice vote on the taking out the in addition and then move on to what you mentioned, share eagles and then, and then, uh, do a vote on the whole thing? Is that?
Yes, I think that's the way I'd like to, to move ahead. Yeah. So thank you. Yeah.
So I'm in favor of taking out in addition.
I, I, I don't understand. I've lost the, the thread on that. I would just as soon leave, leave that paragraph alone. I, I, I've lost the thread on why we do that. Um, so I was, I didn't think we were going to talk about that one. No, am I wrong? I guess I'm wrong.
Uh, you know, I'm okay either way. I, I just, I think.
My suggestion was just to remove the reference to the road and just follow the first sentence with the sentence that would start is it is well demonstrated that population density is an important determining factor. That's all.
I'd still like not following this. I don't know what the reference to the road, where the reference.
I don't understand that either.
Yeah.
What's the reference to the road, Mark?
Yeah, you mean the, the, the paragraph below it?
No, I'm sorry. Um, just to clarify, this is in paragraph two.
Yeah.
The first sentence is based on our analysis. And then there is, um, one more sentence, two more sentences after that. Right? And then there's the actually, there's quite a bit there. Just the second last sentence is starts in, in addition. And I, and, and I think that it would just be a simpler, shorter, uh, a, a more potent way of pointing out the impacts of large scale development by removing the reference to the road. And whether or not people want to do that or not, I, I'm not, I don't care. I just think it would improve the letter.
I, I just am lot, I'm not tracking because there's no reference to the road in that paragraph, is there?
Yeah, I don't see that either.
So if you want to get rid of the, the reference to the road in the paragraph below, because it's confusing the, 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 the previous paragraph, I'm okay with that, Mark. If you think it's taking us in a direction that you're not, you're not tracking in terms of, we didn't mean to endorse the road. We were just saying that it's, it's an unqualified cost, but if that's a kind of a, um, it doesn't belong here, we'll, we'll just take that out as confusing with.
Well, you have, you don't say road. It says third evacuation scenario.
Oh, okay. I was, we do say road in the, in the, in the, uh.
But the third evacuation.
That's not the road.
That's not the road. That's, that's a scenario of fires starting right at SDC.
Right, coming from the west or at SDC. So it's a different point. Yeah. At the other campus. I, I see a couple of hands. I, uh, are those hands active or are they previous?
I mean, I'm still, I'm, I'm ready to vote either, either with or without any additional edits.
I'm ready to vote as, as well.
Also, also ready.
Okay.
And I think we lost Matt.
No, he's still there, I think.
Oh, is he?
Yeah, I'm here, but I'm losing it.
We should try to vote while Matt.
To be disrespectful to anybody at all. It's just my own personal state.
We, we understand.
Understood. And I think we just have to keep in mind the purpose of this letter, um, and, and that, that we're just sort of we've made comments previously. We appreciate the supervisor's review of those comments and we pull out a couple of key, key facts. And of course we can all comment as members of the public as well. All right. So I, yeah, let's, let's go ahead and would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we vote, uh, whether to, uh, uh, agree to send this letter to the supervisors.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Raise or?
Favor.
I'm in favor. I support the letter.
Okay, opposed? Okay. Um, the only thing we did not determine is if we're going to carbon copy anyone, that there was a question mark there on the CC. I don't know that, that we need to do so, but we, we, we could, um.
Um, yeah. Certainly, I think everybody at the county should be CC'd and in permanent snoma and supervisors. I don't know if it matters.
It goes to supervisors, right? So yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, we can, uh, if there are other, I don't know if we need to, to determine that tonight. Hannah, I'll, I'll ask you if there's, if we have other CCs that are deemed appropriate. Is that okay to just determine when we get the letter finalized? Um, or do we need to determine that now?
I think that's, um, fine. It's not changing any of the content of what you've approved.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Um, I know that process is awkward and I, I'm not going to say otherwise. But we, we've done it. This is our fourth time and we've managed to do it. So I thank everybody. I, I know it's, it's awkward and it's, it can be frustrating. So I, I really hear you on that and I appreciate you kind of working it through to get to decisions. So we can submit these letters as, as we've done, then we'll do on this one as well. Right? So, um, with that, I think that was our only real, uh, uh, agenda item tonight. We don't have others on the agenda. Um, the only thing I'll say is that there is a Glenn Allen party tonight, starting, uh, now actually at six 30 to eight 30 at the, the Jack London Lodge. And everyone is, is welcome to attend. Um, anything else, uh, before we, we close?
Go have fun and celebrate our town.
Yeah. Thank you and have fun wherever you are tonight. Councilmember Dicky.
Have fun.
Councilmember Nada Morgan, did you?
You know, it, this is really brief, but it was incredibly significant. I know you all know Susan Brandt-Holly, environmental preservation attorney, and she called me a couple of days ago and she won a significant case called Save the Capital, Save the Trees against the state of California. And, and it was, she won against DGS, which that's an amazing precedent for all of us. And, uh, we're really excited about that.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Very, very good news.
Interesting.
It is.
Yeah.
Unless there's anything else, I'm going to call for a, a motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
I second.
Right.
All right.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Be careful out there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Maybe see you at the party.
Yeah, I'm gonna walk across the street now.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you.